Okay, we're back. A little bit of a technical difficulty, sorry about that. Okay, so Counselor Dunn, let's start over on 9.2. We have a memorandum regarding off-road vehicle use of city roads. Task force recommendations for Bob Cajun. Why don't you give us an overview again? And we'll walk through the recommendations and we'll go from there. So go ahead.
Okay, so the recommendations. The task force recommends that we concentrate on the urban part of the village of Bob Cajun for now. And then we discuss the rural route hookups under that venue. This setup hooks up the trailer park, which is down by the arena. And it allows the villagers of Bob Cajun to access County Road 8, which is a short, or City Road 8, which is a short 20 clicks over to Fennel Falls. And as the trails open up, my understanding is there's a whole series of trails, the Five Points Trails, et cetera, that are accessible off of County Road 8. And I've moved the recommendation, and the last time I looked, Counselor Seymour Fagan had seconded the motion.
Okay, so let's, thank you for that. Let's just do the received first, like we did the last one. So let's get a motion that the memorandum from Counselor Dunn regarding off-road vehicle use of city roads, task force recommendations for Bob Cajun be received. Let's do that first, and then we'll deal with the recommendation. Moved by Counselor Dunn, seconded by Counselor Seymour Fagan. Any questions on receive? I'll call the question, all in favor? That's passed. So then the recommendation is that council approve the following routes through the village of Bob Cajun. CR 36 from city limits to King Street, King Street to Mansfield Road, Mansfield Road to Rhodes End, Sherwood Street to Canal Street, Canal Street to CR 36, William Street from King Street to Canal Street, Main Street from Canal Street to Joseph Street, Joseph Street from Main Street to CR 8, and Duke Street from CR 36 to CR 8. And that's the recommendation from the task force. Counselor Dunn, you said you would move that?
I will.
And seconded by Counselor Seymour Fagan? Is that what I heard previously?
Uh huh.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to, you spoke to it, Counselor Dunn? Do you want to speak to it, Counselor Seymour Fagan?
Yes, I do. So this allows access from the trail, which is just north of the city. That's the Five Points Trail, just north of Bob Cajun. It'll allow the people who are up there the access into the town to use the amenities, or vice versa. So they can come in, they can trailer into the accommodation, and then they can head up that way. Now, I was just actually speaking to someone in Fennel Falls today, and they said that they have found a big difference in their shoulder season business. It keeps the village a little bit more alive, because they do allow them in there. And it has made a difference for the commercial businesses in Fennel Falls. And this is all that we want to do, is just help these businesses out right now, especially the accommodation. They've been hit very, very hard. And Fennel Falls, their accommodation is busy in the winter, in the fall, and in the spring with the ATVs. You know, so it's really a commercial access. And like I said before, it's not like it's going to be like a big parade of ATVs. You know, it's just, they can have access. It's less than, probably, it's probably about five minutes away on an ATV to access the roads north of County Road 8. It probably two minutes, actually. So that's all that the intention was to do, because I've had the businesses approach me. So that's what I wanted to do.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Really? Nobody's got any comments on this route through Bob Cajun? Okay, I'll do it again. I think this is, I'm not going to support this. I think I made myself kind of clear before what I thought we should do. I think we should focus on the Lindsay as a pilot project. For me personally, this route has not been rationalized. I'm not seeing the justification. I don't believe we've done our due diligence in, is this a good route or the best route to access Bob Cajun? I'm going to offer some clarity. This does not allow access into Bob Cajun from Five Points, because the county roads in Peterborough County are not open at this time to ATVs. So that does not allow presently, now, they are working on opening up some of those county roads, but currently, it does not allow access. The only way you can get to Five Points is on those county roads if you're leaving Bob Cajun, and that is not available at this time. I have great concerns about Canal Street to Highway 36. And you're asking, I don't know how many of you have ever been up in Bob Cajun, besides you, obviously, Kathleen, in the summertime, or the fall, or the spring, and try to go left onto Highway 36 from Canal Street. You'll sit there for 20 minutes in your car, and now you want ATVs to do that at an uncontrolled intersection. You're asking for trouble, in my opinion. A much better route, if you need to go there, would be King Street to the light to access 36, but that's just my opinion. You know, accessing Highway 8, I know comments were made, comments were, plus you've got the bridge. When you, if you, if you ever get onto Highway 36, you've got the bridge to go over. It didn't justify as a pinch point for the Lindsay route, but I guess it's okay to go over the one on Bob Cajun. I just, I think we're, I think this is one of those ones. I'm not opposed to allowing access at some point through Bob Cajun when we have a justification of routes, but these routes don't go anywhere. They just go through Bob Cajun to Highway 8, and I know you can get on Highway 8 and drive all the way to Fennel Falls. I'm not sure how many people do that. There are no trails around Bob Cajun that we are trying to link, and I think we're ahead of ourselves. To me, this Bob Cajun conversation should be deferred to the fall. We'll have a proper discussion, and when you come forward with some recommendations, in my opinion, they need to be a whole lot better justified than these ones are. Because I was part of that task force when you made these recommendations. It started off with this, it went to this, it ended to this, they changed their mind a couple of times in between, and I just left that task force going, that's not how we do this, folks. We owe the people a better justification for that. So I'm, I'm, I'm asking that this motion be refused, and let's defer this conversation to the fall. Let's do it properly, let's take our time, and let's make sure we get it right, folks, because I don't think we're going to get it right. But that's my opinion. Any other questions, comments? Counselor Ashmore, go ahead, sir.
Just a clarification on the corner of Canal and 36. Are we not getting a light there very soon? I think Counselor Seymour Fagan could elaborate on that, but I thought there was a light going there. Stoplight.
Counselor Seymour Fagan, I have no idea.
Yes, so that's part of the Canal Street reconstruction, so they're going to have to start counting the cars there. But yes, they were going to put in the mechanics for a light at that intersection, and it needs a light. You are correct, Mayor Lethem, it does need a light. A lot of areas in Bob Cajun, you know, need some traffic calming. Now, you can get to trails north of 8. So, so, you know, it's not quite correct saying that you can't. So you can get to the trails north of 8. And that's what we were talking about, the linkage. Now, you're saying that, you know, defer it? Okay, you can speak to the businesses and tell them that we'll defer it until next spring, if that's, you know, if that's how you feel, so adamant. But I think it's also very important to realize that we need to support these businesses. I understand that people don't want it, but I've had more people say that they want it. So, you know, it's a balance, and when people say that they don't want something, that's because they don't want it. And if they can come back with a better reason why they don't want it, and, and some kind of, some kind of compensation as to say, okay, well, maybe we could go this way, or maybe we could do one route. Not just, no, we're not having it, because that's not the right thing to do. And as you all know, and I've been, I've said this, I've been threatened. I'm tired of this, and I don't like being pushed around by people for no reason, because they're not getting their way. So, you know, if we have to defer it, I don't have an issue with that, but we need to figure out a way to get it through at some point.
No, fair enough, and I'm not, you know, I am in full support of a long-term plan to support our businesses anywhere in the city. I don't believe doing this haphazardly and thinking that if we rush this through for September, there's going to be this big boom to all our local businesses, and that's going to make or break them this fall. There's a, you know, the, most of them are here for the long term. I know it's been a tough couple of years, trust me. And you know what? I'm not opposed to doing this. I'm just, I think we're rushing it, we're doing it too fast, we need to have some more discussion. And I know you're in the hot seat up there, and I can appreciate that, but I don't think that justifies, you know, trying to put something through, and, and, you know, with the intent to support businesses, when I don't believe we've given it its due diligence, and, and, and that, that's all I wanted to add. But thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Yep, I'll come back to you. Let me just see if there's anybody else, Kathleen. Is there anybody else wants to offer a comment or a question? Counselor Yo, go ahead.
Thank you, and sitting, listening to the conversation, and I'm wondering if you want a motion to defer.
Well, I would certainly support it, but I can't make motions, so I'm going to leave it with you guys. I just, I, I'm in favor of having this discussion.
I'll make a motion to defer, look for a second.
You'll move to defer till September, fall discussions with the rest of the program? Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Elmsley. We can't debate it, folks, we can only debate the timeline. It's a motion to defer. Any comments on the timeline? Counselor Seymour Fagan?
No, I think it's a great timeline, and I also, the reason being is something was brought to my attention in the last few weeks in regards to Bob Cajun, and the amount of people calling, our government officials, not officials, but the police, the bylaw. Bob Cajun is known to be the worst on complaints. And over the last week, when people started complaining about this, I know that that's what was going to happen. And when the gentleman came forward with the idea today that we actually make sure that they're valid, I think that's, that's perfect. So this gives us time to work on that as well. So I'm totally fine with this.
So deferring till September, thank you. I'm going to call the question then. All in favor? That motion's passed. Thank you. Thank you for that. I think that's a wise decision. Let's go to 9.3. Actually, I need to add to that, that this recommendation be forwarded to council for consideration at the next regular council meeting. If I can just get that as a wrap-up from the, from the deferral. Counselor Yo, seconded by Counselor Vale, all in favor? That's passed, thank you. 9.3 is a memorandum regarding Grove Road Limited Service Agreement from Counselor Elmsley. Your memo, sir, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. If you recall, last year, we extended service to the Grove Road with the expectation that they would be in a position to sign a limited service agreement come this spring, June of, of this spring. With COVID and not being able to work together, there's still a bit of work to be done. But I will tell you that, as you see in the memo, they've done a whole bunch of things up there. They have had trees cut down, they've moved bushes and rocks and rock walls, and cut fence posts, and done a number of things that public work staff is in favor of. So what we're requesting here is that we give them the summer to complete the work that they have left. And there will be a couple of areas that don't quite meet the four-meter mark, and because of provincial regulations, staff can't support it if it doesn't meet the four-meter regulations. But council could still pass it in the fall, because it's been that way for 100 years, and we've been doing service on it, and there have been no incidents. So what I would ask of you today is that you approve that they be given the summer to do some more work on their road, and that in September, we come back and see where we are. As you can see, there's a couple of pinch points, and I think it's about, like, instead of four meters, it's 3.5, and in one case, it's about 3.8 meters. So we're not talking about a great, a great deal of space here. So I'd appreciate your support to extend this agreement until September, and then we will look at a limited service agreement at that time. Thank you.
So can I offer that the memorandum from Counselor Elmsley regarding Grove Road Limited Service Agreement be received? That staff continue to provide service on Grove Road, allowing the association to complete additional improvements until September 30th, 2021, extending the deadline from June 30th, 2021, previously imposed by council? That council acknowledges that the location of hydropoles, an armor stone wall, and bedrock encroach into the minimum with requirement on Grove Road, and that staff be authorized to execute a limited service agreement in lieu of the deficiencies noted above, and that this recommendation be forwarded to council for consideration? You'll move that, Counselor Elmsley?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Can I get a second, or? Counselor Seymour Fagan, thank you. You've already spoken to it, Counselor Elmsley. Are there any concerns from yourself or council that approving a limited service agreement with these deficiencies will set a precedent for other agreements and other associations that don't want to meet the criteria that we're trying to get them to meet? Is there any concern there?
I have no concern along those lines, because they have really gone the extra mile to try and make sure that, that they do meet the four meters. And I mean, if you were to move the four-meter stick in, you know, a different direction, you could probably get the four meters, so it's, it is really close. And no, I don't have any concerns about other people coming forward. I, I think that, you know, if there are other people who have similar circumstances, that we look at each one individually, and we don't consider this a precedent.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on the memo? Call the question, all in favor? And that's passed. Okay, I'm just going to go back for a minute. Before we do 9.4, I did want council to consider amending the terms of reference for the off-road vehicle use of city road task force. So I'm just asking if council will consider that the off-road vehicle use of city road task force terms of reference be amended to change the maximum from seven to nine, and that two community members be added before future discussions resume in the fall? If council, would you consider that as an amendment to the terms of reference, so we can get a bit more inclusivity when we start these up again in September? If so, I need a mover. Counselor Yo, thank you, you'll move that? Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor O'Reilly. Any questions, comments? Counselor Dunn, go ahead.
Yeah, I have no issue on, on the, on the surface. I am curious as to, as to how we find these extra two members. Like, we want, basically, from what I understand, we're seeking two people that don't want to increase the number of routes and talk them into joining a committee that wants to? I mean, I have no problem with, with, with the larger committee. It's, like, unless somebody's going to hand check the people they want, I don't know how, like, we had 23 people, which is the greatest number of people that have ever applied for, for a task force, apply. And we got it down to nine, and then we got it down to four. So I'm wondering how the 23 people that applied feel. And I'm wondering how the five people that didn't get selected will, will feel. So it's a good theory, but unless, unless you put forward two names of the two people that you want, I don't know how we end up with a better committee than what we already have. But it, you know, it's up to council, but it's just a, I don't know how you make something like this work.
Well, no, fair enough. And, and you know what? We can either, if we pass the motion, we can either then look at who's already applied and pick another couple of community members out of there to try and balance it a little more. I guess part of the concerns comes from your exact comments. This shouldn't be a task force that wants to improve access. This should be a task force that wants to hear from the public about the option of improving road access, and hearing from the community as part of that. So, again, we've got people on the task force who are just gung ho to approve everything and open up every road in the city, and we need to find a balance on the other side. And I'm sure we can figure out a way to do that if we amend the terms of the task force and, you know, come up with a couple residents that can give a fair opinion, and we'll put it out there, we'll advertise, and we'll go from there. I don't have the answers for you here today, Counselor Dunn. I think it's just, it's a move that we can make to try and bring a little bit more of a balanced conversation forward in the future, that's all.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that. I, I guess my other question was, is, what I had anticipated is that over the summer months, the task force would continue to meet and bring forward recommendations in September. So that would be my other question. So we're not going to continue to meet for the summer, and then we're going to start meeting again in a...
The motion?
I'm, I'm fine. Whatever council wants to do, I'm more than happy to go along with it.
I think council's motion was actually already passed to give you the summer off, to resume the conversation in September, and bring a report back in Q4 by the end of the year on any future recommendations. So that's the recommendation that was passed by the previous council. So I think we give everybody a break for a little while from ATVs. Let's focus on implementing what we've passed here today, if it goes through council, and then we can pick up the discussions with an amended task force if this goes through, and then we'll go from there and decide where council wants to go. So, any other questions on this amendment? I'll call the question then, all in favor? And that's passed. Thank you. Okay, let's go down to 9.4. Is Counselor Ashmore's memo regarding ditching and drainage on Stonegate Road? Go ahead, Counselor Ashmore.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, all I'm just asking for is just, it may only be like an hour of staff's time or a couple of hours, it's not a big thing. It just, I'd just like to see a report by the end of quarter three, so.
Okay, so your memo, that memorandum from Counselor Ashmore regarding ditching and drainage issue on Stonegate Road be received, that staff investigate the drainage issue along Stonegate Road, and report back to council with their findings by Q3 of 2021, and that this recommendation be forwarded to council for consideration at the next meeting. You'll move that, Counselor Ashmore?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Does anybody want to second that?
No issues.
Counselor Elmsley, you'll second that? Any discussion, further discussion, questions? Deputy Mayor O'Reilly, go ahead.
Thanks very much, maybe through to Counselor Ashmore. Is there, like, we all got a lot of roads that need ditching and drainage. I just wondered, is there a flooding issue? Is there something, just to be more, there's not much in the, in the memo, that's all. What, is it a flood, erosion issue, or flooding issue, or what's the issue?
Well, yeah, the issue is that, this is sort of the top road, and it's, it's impacting on the, on the waterfront, too. So it actually compounds when it goes down the hill. So there, it's a, it's a flooding issue, it's a drainage issue. And I didn't want to go into too much depth, but the people there, I've been there to see it, take some photos, and, and the folks there, especially along Aspen. I know it's not a lot of people there, but, you know, there's enough there that want to see this looked at. Just, just, just some time spent on it. I mean, they just, they deserve at least something. I mean, they're, they've been neglected for a while, and I think just need to get some attention on this, so.
Okay. Well, it's going to come back to, from staff anyways, and we can figure out where to go from there, if anywhere. Any further questions on this memo? I'll call the question, all in favor? And that's passed. Thank you. 9.5 is a memorandum regarding the noise bylaw. Counselor Seymour Fagan, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Again, with Bob Cajun, we get a lot of complaints. And when I was speaking with bylaw, there's no consistency on certain bylaws. One of them, you can't, like, you couldn't sing "Happy Birthday" at nine o'clock, but you can have a DJ until 11:00. So I just want them to have a look at it. And I've spoken to bylaw about this, to bring back some consistencies, because people are a bit confused, and some of them know the loopholes, so, you know, like to call on others, and it's, sometimes it's a bit of a nuisance. So if we could just have some clarity and some consistency on the bylaws, yeah, for the noise, that's it.
So let the memo from Counselor Seymour Fagan regarding noise bylaw review be received, that staff review the noise bylaw, being bylaw 219124, for inconsistencies, and report back to Q4 2021, and that this recommendation be forwarded to council for consideration at the next meeting. Moved by Counselor Seymour Fagan, seconded by Counselor Elmsley. Any questions on this memo? Call the question, all in favor? And that's passed. Thank you. 9.6 is a memorandum from Counselor Seymour Fagan regarding larger setbacks for, larger setbacks for refreshment vehicle businesses. Go ahead, Counselor Seymour Fagan.
Okay, so, refreshment vehicles, again, again, that we're dealing with this. So I think it was in 2016, when we looked at it again, we looked at bringing the, the refreshment vehicles into the area for economic impact. You know, because it became a big thing in all the other cities, they could have food truck festivals, just, just add some vibrancy to the downtown, or to other areas. Now, because of COVID and the impact it's had on our businesses, we've had a lot of, again, Bob Cajun, a lot of complaints, and bylaw has had many, many calls on this, because, you know, we had, we had some refreshment vehicles that were close to the restaurants, and the restaurants are paying commercial taxes. And I don't know how much a permit is for a chip truck or something, maybe $500. So, you know, it's just looking at further setbacks to protect our commercial businesses and our commercial tax base. And again, I've spoken to bylaw about this as well.
Okay, so if I can just take some liberty with your memo and just suggest, if you're going to move this, you've got a couple of conflicting, one, you're saying that the setbacks be increased, and then the second that, you're saying that the bylaw be reviewed. So what I would suggest, if you're okay with it, that the memorandum from Counselor Seymour Fagan regarding larger setbacks for refreshment vehicle businesses be received, that bylaw, switch them around, that bylaw 216245 being the current bylaw to regulate and govern refreshment vehicles be reviewed by staff, and that they report back to council by Q4 2021, and that the setbacks for refreshment vehicle businesses be looked at, increasing from 150 meters to one kilometer, be part of that review when it comes back, and that that recommendation be forwarded to council for consideration. I think that was what your intent was, so are you okay with that adjustment?
Yes, I've had my hands full lately.
No, no worries.
On all sorts of things. So, yes, so thank you, that's, that's totally fine with me.
I just didn't, I didn't want to put words in your mouth, so if you're okay with that.
That's all right.
So you'll move that. Can I get a second? I see you, Counselor Yo. Are you seconding it, or do you have a question? Counselor Yo?
Yeah, I'll second it, but I also have a question.
Okay, I'll take your second, and go ahead with your question.
This review of the bylaws, and I know the bylaw is broken up anyway, but is it going to be site-specific to Bob Cajun for the review? Because we don't have that problem in Copacabana, New Orleans, and stuff, where we're only allowed to have one refreshment vehicle anyway? So is it site-specific review, or are you just going to look at the whole bylaw?
Counselor Seymour Fagan, go ahead.
I think that we should look at the whole bylaw. And yeah, you don't have any issues up there, but, you know, you could, who knows? And I don't know if you're allowed only one, because we did change it in 2016, because before, in Bob Cajun, there was only two allowed, and one had to be mobile. And then we changed it again. So, yeah, you know, I think review the whole thing, and then we can come back and make some decisions on it.
So the current motion, to answer your question, is a current review of the bylaw citywide.
That's fine.
Counselor Elmsley, question, go ahead.
Not a question, Mr. Mayor. I'm speaking against the motion. If they want to make it site-specific to Bob Cajun, I'm fine with it, but we've opened this can of worms many times before. As Counselor Yo said, he doesn't have a problem in Copacabana or, or New Orleans, and I don't have a problem in... have a problem in Fenland Falls, and I don't want one. And you make it a kilometer, and you can't have a chip truck in town, because it'll be out in the highway somewhere, and nowhere near the, the village limits. So I, if it wants to be site-specific to Bob Cajun, I'm fine with it, but otherwise, I'm not supporting it.
Okay, no, just for clarity, it's not site-specific, it's citywide, and it is just a review, so there's no decision being made till it comes back in Q4, but it is a citywide review being, being proposed. Any other questions or comments on the memo? Okay, I'm going to call the question, then, is everybody, everybody's clear? I'll call the question on the memo, all in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, motion passes, thank you. And that's it. Need a motion to adjourn. Counselor Yo, seconded by Counselor Dunn. Thank you for your conversation today, good meeting, good discussion, a little long, sorry about that, all in favor? That's passed. Have a good evening, and we'll talk to you soon.
Andy?
Yes.
Andy, before you go, are you logging on to that Flaco or Flato presentation?